Then excuse yourself and then when we're done, you can welcome to come back into meetings. Jason, would you lead us in the pledge?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible.
Victor, would you please lead us in the prayers?
Father God in heaven, we thank you for this wonderful day that you've allowed us to breathe in. We thank you for what you're doing in the city of Montevista. We thank you for what you're doing in the San Luis Valley and in the state of Colorado. We ask for your guidance and your mercy and protection as Jesus' family pray.
Roll call, Unida.
Counselor Howard.
Here.
Counselor Lorenz.
Here.
Counselor Watson.
Here.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Here.
Mayor Becker.
Here.
A pharmacist declared.
Do we have any modifications to the agenda?
Uh, yes, mayor, we do have modifications to the agenda. We'd like to add G two A, the R E R C update and sign information by Xavier. And then we would like to add N six staff report from city attorney Gene Ferris.
And we need to remove the city manager report?
Yes, sir, we need to remove N five, the city manager report.
So moved. Second. It's been moved and seconded to modification to the agenda to add to aid for the R E R C report and sign information by Xavier. Add N six city attorney report and remove N five city manager report. Is there any discussion? Unida?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to modify the agenda, adding G two A R E R C update, sign information by Xavier. Adding N six staff reports, city attorney report, and removing N five city manager report.
All right, thank you. Approval of consent agenda minutes a regular meeting from June twentieth twenty twenty four and review and approval of accounts payable. Don't move. Second. Been moved in seconded to approve the consent agenda for the minutes of regular meeting from June twentieth twenty twenty four. Review and approval of accounts payable. Is there any more discussion? Unida?
Counselor Howard.
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz.
Yes.
Counselor Watson.
Hi.
Mayor Protem Segola.
Hi.
Mayor Becker.
Hi.
Motion carries to approve the consent agenda.
The proclamation communications and appointments swearing in of the new police chief, Sean McDonough. Did I say that right, Sean? Is it the chief?
Hello, everyone. I'm here this evening to introduce the new chief of police to the city of Montevista, Sean McDonough. After an extensive and thorough search process, we have found an exceptional leader who brings a wealth of experience, dedication, and vision to the future of our police department and community. Sean was born and raised in Australia and began his law enforcement career with the Australian Police and draws on a wide range of experience from patrol, highway patrol, intelligence response team, supervisor, and commander, and was responsible for the motorcade security planning and traffic operations for world leaders, heads of state, and their delegations when visiting Australia, managing up to five thousand shifts and over one million traffic movements. In his most recent career role as chief of police for the Rocky Ford Police Department, Sean checked on an agency that was in crisis with only three officers covering twenty-four seven shifts for the city. It was also an agency that had suffered suffered decades of scandal and officer misconduct. Sean went to work immediately rebuilding the agency's severed relationships with federal, state, and local law enforcement agencies, partnering drastically to improve the public safety in the city of Rocky Ford and restoring public trust in the police department. We are very excited to welcome Sean to the city of Montevista, and we are confident his leadership will bring positive and safe continued safety to our community. Sean.
Please, your time, please. Ricky, after the, hi, Sean McDonough. Do solemnly swear or affirm under the penalty of forgery that I will support the constitution of the United States of America.
I will support the constitution of the United States of America.
The city of Montevista charter.
City of Montevista charter.
And ordinances. And that I will faithfully perform the duties of the chief of police.
I will try to perform the duties of chief of police.
Which I have been appointed and will try and about to.
Have been appointed, now that is.
So help me God. Congratulations, sir.
You're gonna say a speech now, aren't you? All right, we'll move on to citizen comments and special presentations. Do we have any citizen comments? Come on up, state your name, be sure and sign that paper, please.
My name is Jeremy Garner. Thanks. Thank you for letting me speak here again. It's nice to see the new chief. I've been kind of waiting for him to come in. You may be familiar with that and the police entity of this thing. I'm hoping to one day to discuss further policeman's conduct. But you are good at handling, so awesome. We have a professional from Australia. I just, you know, I love Mukai Jasper, which gives its name in Australia, so cool. I hope to have a positive talk conversation if possible with you. I'm here to talk tonight about the whole Jesus prayer where I excluded myself. Uh, it's a form of exclusion that I felt that I had to take. Uh, just because the name of Jesus does terrify me as an individual. I don't want to take away from you or your beliefs. Everybody's allowed their beliefs. You can believe in patriotism. You can believe in a lot of things. It's 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 up to you to have that belief. And I would not dare take away your free will to choose those things. It's just a terrible thing. It's terrifying for me. Uh, it's a human sacrifice. It does require blood and it's sacrifice. I mean, it's origins. And it's just something that's uh makes me a little nervous, especially around police. It 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 increases my heart rate and PTSD symptoms. I have a piece of portnoy oil floor right here that comes from Abiquiu. Um, I know its numbers. I believe in ge- geology. I can warm my geology shirt today, so I do have different beliefs. And I don't, I don't want to offend yours at all, because I I actually was raised in the assemblies of God, where they invoke, you know, God's presence with tongues and interpretation, something that used to terrify me also. So I'm just wondering, since there's different versions of Jesus and you have different churches available for you in Montevista, that you can do that openly. And you know, I I hate to be rude with this last part, but it's kind of like a hypocrisy if you just wanted to hear it at city hall also, because you you know, you can pray in many places and I don't think it's necessary here. And so if you want to boast about it, that's cool, but it's like usually particularly the same. And if anything was to be more specific, I would record the exact names of things and not tongues and interpretations, times, dates, pronunciations, things to that, um, because you know, I'm a dreamer and I never give up my dreams. Those are my beliefs. I have them interpreted in Christian um, standards and also Native American standards. And it's quite interesting to do that for me, my belief. And you guys are yours, but let's keep that out of here and make um the guidance, what people need to do, which is right or wrong, and we'll decide not Jesus or God. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any other citizen comments? Scheduled appearances? Xavier for the R E R C, R E R C update? And the sign info? Sign this? You were actually scheduled to appear, so you're okay.
Okay. Well, it's there anyways.
Okay.
Yeah, would you mind pulling up? Thank you. Anyways, uh, I'm Xavier Campos. Thank you all for letting me talk today. Uh, I work as the city's community coordinator. Met some of you before, some new faces here. So yeah, I'll be covering a little bit of the signage around the city. I am not originally from Palmist, though, even the valley. I'm from Florida, very far away, and um and so I came here to work on the R E R C program, which is the Recreation for Rural Economies uh, or Recreation Recreation Economy for Rural Communities Program. And one of the goals of that program is signage and downtown amenities and vibrancy for the downtown area. So DJ Pamela, the city planner, had me go through and go through the downtown, sort of look at the signage and just look at it as an outsider and see if there were any things that I noticed that might be improved. So we're gonna go through that. So here's just sort of an overview of the map of where I covered. I covered the main road, not necessarily the signage um in those interior streets. Uh, city limits sign, first of all, um, there isn't anything letting people know when they're leaving, just when they're coming in. Really, not anything exciting to look at. And the signage that we do have for the city of Montevista is really far out and away from what would be considered downtown for the city. We have some examples, Florida, for the entry and exit signs that other areas use that might be used to sort of demonstrate Montevista's unique character. You know, we have the Stampede, and we have the Crane Festival, uh, and we could leverage those things and sort of attracting visitors to come look, just sort of aesthetic improvement. Um, then we have these signs here for the golf course and driving range. These are, uh, if you look closely, they have the old logo from twenty sixteen on them, and they retain the same design as some of the other signage in downtown uh, with that border and sort of black background and font and whatnot. But they're missing uh the locations for things like the post office, the library, city hall, other things that people should be directed towards when they're going into our city. Uh, but these, for whatever reason, only direct towards the golf course and driving range, so that was just a little odd to me. Uh, we have these signs for the Wildlife Refuge, which are nice and they're C G O signs, but they don't really tell a lot for anyone that isn't aware of the Crane Festival or what necessarily to do there. We have Cooper the Looper, which is by the Safeway. Um, I actually had to get out of my car and walk over to it to even be able to read that sign on there, and this is important for us because we have whooping cranes that come to Montevista every year with the Crane Festival. Uh, there's only two of them, and it was part of a fail attempt to try to get them to come back and start migrating here, but this is important for us, and yet this statue that we have is just sort of sitting in front of Safeway, and you can't really read the sign and sort of pass by it, so. And we had these recreation signs here as well. Um, the same or the destination on them aren't the same on both, and that's also applied for the golf course signs. You see them like the same design on all of them, but for whatever reason, some locations are just omitted. Uh, and you know, only locals are gonna know where those things are. They aren't on the signs. Uh, we have this sign for Welcome to Montevista, which isn't even from the city. It's from Waste Management, and it mentions the restored historic downtown, but I've been downtown and I haven't seen anything indicating parts of the historic downtown or what parts of it have been restored. Uh, so that was just interesting to me. Uh, same with the post office, actually. Uh, we have been beautiful post office here, frankly, from the nineteen twenties. Or no, not the nineteen twenties, the nineteen thirties. Uh, and we just have this sign here that just sort of says where it is, and we don't really leverage that architectural beauty that we have here. Uh, just as an example, got some great pictures from Kenneth Michel of that post office. Uh, same with the National Historic District. We just sort of have this sign here. I have no idea what about it it's supposed to be indicating with that illustration. Uh, you can get modified signs that specify what about the area is historic, or at least give a little something that, you know, maybe you could look on your smartphone, get a little more information about, but as of right now, I don't really get a lot from that sign. Same with the museum, uh, that can also be modified, and you can put what kind of a museum is on there, and that's on the main highway. So as you're driving through, chances are you're not going to be looking left and right at the signage, and the signage for that museum is actually on the building flat, so as you're driving by, you won't be able to see that museum sign, but not see what kind of museum we have here. Uh, same with the Information Center and the Chamber of Commerce. It may be unclear whether you should be stopping here to come in and get everything that you need if you're staying at Montevista for an extended amount of time. Um, sometimes like for Stampede, I saw that they had accompanying signage for getting tickets and whatnot here. And then the library as well, uh, we have an amazing Carnegie library here. Uh, I hadn't even realized that there were any still in operation, and it is a historic site, but as you can see from our signage here, anyone that's passing through, you wouldn't pick up on that at all unless you knew something about Montevista, uh, which is unfortunate. And we don't have any historic signage in the city as well, which just which sort of give people something to look at, something to read about, learn something new about the city and go, oh, I didn't know that. That's interesting. Like, I found out that the um, we used to have the armory for the Sandways Valley here oh, way a while back, and it's not indicated anywhere. It was just on a website on nowhere, but something like that on signage would be nice for people to read and learn something about Montevista. Here's some more other examples. Uh, public parking, that's another thing. So this sign is actually um off of the main highway, off to the side, and if you're driving through, you can't even see the sign. You actually have to go like deep into that public parking area to see, oh, I can, I can park here. So but really, it's only helpful for people that already know that there's public parking there, and it's not doing anything for anyone else that's trying to find somewhere. Um, logos, this is another thing. Uh, so as I mentioned earlier, some of those signs have that twenty sixteen logo still on them. Um, on the courtroom doors, we have that circular city of Montevista logo, and then uh, by CPAC, we have that Montevista logo with the potato and the wheat, and then on uniforms and on some of our cars now, we have the newest version, and so it might be a little jarring not to have that uniformity all around. Uh, so this kind of leads us into the balance of signage. You know, it is nice to be able to indicate to people where things are, uh, how to get to things, but you also want to be efficient and not have it look ugly. So I've provided some helpful examples of some frankly awful signage. Uh, and this is what you don't want to do, because you have so much stuff to look at, and none of it really indicates to you anything, just because there's so much you can't minimize the most important things that you should be getting to people. So here's some really nice examples of efficient signage that you could do for the city that would help direct people to places that they could go. Um, that bottom left one is especially nice, because the color coding will show you, you know, which ones are administrative, which ones are cultural, and make it easier for people to navigate throughout the area and get to things for what they're looking for. And so, yeah, if you look at the two, it's just very clear. Left one, a lot of colors, you don't, not really sure what indicates what different signs, icons versus the left, really simple directions, text, color. So this is just sort of an example I've done uh of how we could modify these and change them to make them look nicer. Obviously, you could put the city logo or whatever on it, but just um something to help people out if they're new or want to make it easier on the eyes going through. So one of the difficulties that we have is, you know, people that are passing through, they've only got that limited space in the downtown where they're driving through to catch their attention. Definitely want to do that. We don't want to over clutter it as well and just have them pass through, and the goal is to be efficient and just have them see what they need to see while not overburdening, uh, but we do have a lot of great things here. Like I said, we have the library. We have the post office. We have the restored downtown. We have a lot of great businesses here, a lot of great restaurants. I genuinely believe that we could optimize this and make it beneficial for everyone. There are a lot of things to see and do in Montevista. It's just a matter of making it easy for people to access those things. Okay, so now I'm going to talk to you a bit about R E R C and the recreational economies for rural communities. Uh, as you know, I was brought in in September twenty twenty-three to work for the city as the community coordinator for this program. It was a program that we were selected for in twenty twenty-two, and after meetings on the local, state, and federal level and a workshop at Sky High in early twenty twenty-three, uh, they brought together an action plan, just this big fat document with all the ideas of how we can improve Montevista and make things better. And so, uh, they brought me in to sort of make those plans reality. Uh, so we had uh five groups. We had a group dedicated to improving access to outdoor recreation, a group dedicated to infrastructure and uh walkability in the city, a group dedicated to artwork and murals and improving downtown vibrancy, uh, dedicated uh group dedicated to business development and tourism, and the last one for agro tourism. Um, the last group didn't go anywhere, and ultimately we discontinued it because there was no interest, and the group for um downtown walkability and uh outdoor access were combined into one group. So we have three groups now. Uh, group one and two, group three, and group four. Um, and so uh, group one and two, really good, exciting news. Um, we successfully completed an evaluation of all of the parks in the city and all of the weaknesses and strengths of them. And as of recently, actually, as of Monday next week, we will be having an archery shoot with the kids from Kids Connection at Shriver Wright. And uh, that will be with CPW, four H, and the city, and Kids Connection, all working together to make this happen. And I will be meeting with some members of the school district uh, sometime next week or the week after that about getting archery programs and possibly getting an archery team for our schools here. So that's good. Um, goal three, which is our art group, is uh, we have established a plan for getting a new mural in for the city. Uh, that will probably be in twenty twenty-five, uh, once we have the fundraising figured out. Uh, and we are working on getting Montevista established as a Colorado creative district, which will make us eligible for a lot of funding for new artwork, statues, basically just aesthetic improvements for the city. Uh, and goal four, which is our tourism and business development group, uh, has just been approved for the Office of Economic Development and International Trade Destination Blueprint, which will grant the city of Montevista a hundred hours of technical assistance and working with tourism experts to improve tourism in the city and identify weaknesses and things we can improve upon to improve businesses and uh tourism opportunities in the city here, and that will be starting in August. So overall, uh, very exciting, a lot going on, and um yeah, uh, I've been here since September twenty twenty-three now, and I would just like to say that I've been extremely grateful for the city of Montevista. You know, I graduated from college. I came here and I had no idea what I was gonna do with my future. And now I I have that, and I've had the privilege of working with wonderful people and an excellent culture at this office. You know, I go into work knowing that I'm going to be working with people that care about this community and want to make things better and will help me with whatever I need to do, and I'm just unbelievably thankful for that. So, um, thank you.
Thank you. I do have one question for you.
Yeah.
Question to you. So we've got several of us, but on the sign stuff, have you put any notes about what it would cost to do that?
No, not at all. And the issue is that at minimum, I think C G O said it would take anywhere from, you know, like a year or more just to go through that process of getting the signage changed, which is why I didn't go any further than my initial evaluation. This would be something just for the council to consider going forward.
You said technical, so it's a demo edit. What what is that concept? What 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 does that mean?
So for Destination Blueprint?
Yeah.
So they will be working with uh local leaders here. We have four local leaders that basically agreed. They're going to be uh in contact with people from O E D and just sort of getting data about Montevista, getting an idea of, you know, what do we have here to offer for people that are coming here for tourism? What are things that maybe are limiting our abilities to reach out to people and get them to come here, which is Stampede, the Crane Festival, the Potato Festival, things like that, and just sort of we will be providing them with the information, and then they'll be providing their expertise and trained eye to see like, okay, this city is doing this, and they're similar to you in this way, so maybe if you change this, it will help. Things like that.
Okay, thanks.
Anybody else have questions for Xavier? Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, we will move to public hearings, so at this time we will recess out of the city council and turn it over to city attorney Gene Ferris for public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. With the council's permission, I think I will induct this from sitting here, because if we have to swear somebody in, they would go to the podium up there, uh, and uh I'll try to talk loud enough and fast enough that we can get through this as quickly as possible. This is what is known uh as the uh export ordinance uh developed by COG. And uh, the record should reflect that the time is now approximately six thirty PM, eighteenth day of July, uh, twenty twenty-four. Uh, we are in city council chambers in the city of Montevista, uh, ninety-five West First Avenue. The uh notice of public hearings states that notice is hereby given a public hearing before the city council of Montevista, Colorado at six PM on the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty-four, located in the chambers of the city council, city hall, uh, ninety-five West First Avenue, Montevista, Colorado, for the purpose of considering the ordinance for adoption of the guidelines and regulations for water projects for export outside of the San Luis Valley as designated as matters of state interest of the city of Montevista. Materials relating to the guidelines and regulations may be examined at the office of the city clerk, city of Montevista, ninety-five West First Avenue, Montevista, Colorado. This notice is published by word of the city council, Montevista. Uh, this is dated uh June the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four. This was published on April the seventeenth, twenty twenty-four by the city clerk. And uh, so this forms the basis of the public hearing. I think the easiest way to go through this really, and and perhaps the fastest way, is to quickly read through the ordinance, uh, and then uh that will set the the groundwork for anybody who wants to testify. And then uh that will set the the groundwork for anybody who wants to testify if you. There is any testimony to this. This is the third part of the puzzle, so to speak, of um. Adoption of designation of state interest, um the I G A between the municipalities. Uh, and finally, the adoption of the rules and regulations that will govern this type of um. Organization protocol. So ordinance nine twenty eight states an ordinance of the city of Montevista, of the city council of the city of Montevista. Adopting rules and regulations as guidelines for designated sites selection and construction. Of major new domestic water systems and major extensions. Of existing domestic water systems and municipal and industrial water projects as activities of state interest. Whereas the areas and activities of state interest act sections twenty-four dash sixty-five point one, one oh one to five oh two C R S, the act. Allows go local governments to designate certain areas and activities as matters of state interest. Which the city of Montevista has enacted by the provisions for this number nine twenty four. And whereas, once a local government has designated. An area or activity as a matter of state interest, it may adopt guidelines and regulations to administer such areas or activities. Whereas any person who would engage in development in a designated area. Or conduct a designated activity must first obtain a permit from the local government. And whereas the surface water and groundwater resources in the San Luis Valley are the lifeblood. Of the human and natural environment and the community's continued ability to thrive. And whereas certain activities of state interest that would transfer water. From the San Luis Valley could endanger the viability of these water resources. And whereas the city of Montevista has designated these activities of state interest and now adopts. Regulations in accordance with the requirements of the act. Now therefore, it is ordained by the city council, the city of Montevista, Colorado, as follows. Findings and determinations section one at the July the eighteenth twenty twenty four regular meeting of the city council. Public hearing was conducted regarding the adoption of guidelines and regulations. For water projects for export outside the San Luis Valley is a designated matter matter of state interest. In accordance with the provisions of Colorado Vice Statutes twenty-four dash sixty-five point one oh one to uh. Point one to one oh one at seek and twenty-four sixty-five one four oh one at at seek. In consideration of the testimony, evidence and documents submitted. At the public hearing, the city council, the city of Montevista does hereby make the following findings and determinations. Public hearing was duly noticed in accordance with the requirements of section uh. Just mentioned, the city council and the city of Montevista has taken the following into account, all testimony. Evidence and documents taken and amended at the public hearing, the intensity. Of current and foreseeable development pressures in the city, the potential for transfer of water. From the jurisdiction of the governing body and from the San Luis Valley, the potential locations of the activities of state interest, the uncontrolled conduct. Of water export that would threaten the surface water and groundwater resources of the San Luis Valley and the designation and regulation. Of such activities will allow for a coordinated approach to protecting these resources. The municipalities and counties in the San Luis Valley will or have entered into. A I G A intergovernmental agreement. To establish the San Luis Valley planning area to protect surface and groundwater. Resources to allow a coordinated approach. For the regulation of these activities of state interest, joint planning. Area define the boundaries of the joint planning area, the geographic boundaries of the counties. Valamosa, Canais, Castillo, Mineral, Rio Grande and Sawatch. Designation, the following activities have been designated as matters of state interest. Site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems. And major extension of domestic water systems, existing domestic water systems. Efficient utilization of municipal and industrial water projects applicability and exclusions. Except for activities set forth in four B below, the ordinance applies as follows. Major domestic water treatment system shall include any collection, treatment, storage or distribution system. And any of its components for the export of water outside of the joint planning area. Directly or by exchange with the eventual capacity to serve fifteen or more service connections. The term components includes without. Limitation, all diversion structures, dams, reservoirs, ponds. Water bodies, streams, trenches, wells, pipes, conduits, tanks, pumps, buildings, structures, trucks. And other methods of conveyance. Two municipal and industrial water project means a project or any of its components to export water exile. Outside the San Luis, uh outside the joint planning area for eventual use. For municipal or industrial purposes directly or by exchange. The term components includes without limitation diversion structures, dams, reservoirs, ponds, water bodies. Streams, trenches, wells, pipes, conduits, tanks, pumps, buildings, structures, trucks or other conveyances. These designated activities. Of state interest do not include augmentation or replacement water. The Rio Grande Basin for the purpose of replacing injurious completions. Caused by the use of water within the San Luis Valley if such water is provided in accordance with the rules. Governing the withdrawal of groundwater and water division number three. The Rio Grande Compact Water Court decrees or other stated no strave or judicial requirements. Nor do these activities designated activities of state interest include export of water from the joint. Uh, planning area that remains for the eventual use within the Rio Grande Basin. Permit required. No person shall conduct a designated activity of state interest. Um, until that activity has been reviewed and permitted by the city. The Montevista, Colorado, in accordance with the duly adopted guidelines and regulations. In conformance with the I G A attached to this ordinance as attachment A and incorporated herein by reference. Severability if any clause, sentence, paragraph are part of this ordinance or the application thereof to any person or circumstance. Shall for any reason be adjudged by court of competent jurisdiction invalid. Such judgment shall not affect the remaining portions of this ordinance. And indicates passage and approval on the eighteenth day of July twenty twenty four. So uh the uh regulations go for about fifty-three pages. And about twenty of these pages are. Uh attributed and and designate the many, many uh organizations that um. Have to be contacted, uh studies done. Uh environmental assessments, uh all this type of thing, everything from uh. C dot, uh state patrol to uh water uh groups, water conservancy groups. Uh practically every level of organization when you deal with water that includes activity in the San Luis Valley. Um, and uh the way it works is that uh. It goes, uh first of all, if there's an application, it first goes to the joint planning board. And the joint planning board then makes its own assessment. Uh conducts its own hearings and then makes a recommendation to the uh. To the permitting authority. And the permitting authority is either the counties. Uh, if it's, if this is going to occur somewhere in the county. As opposed to within the municipality or to the municipality. So it is. Possible that a application could land uh in the hands of the city. Um, eh, it may not be very likely uh that we will encounter this, but if we do, we'll be prepared with uh. How to to handle this matter. Uh, when we were working on this matter, um, uh we worked on it for some time. Uh, we uh were able to eventually get the consensus of COG. Um, and the uh. The joint planning board to proceed with uh some insertion in here. Um, and. Uh, the um. There's an enormous amount of material that would come with one of these applications because. Remember that the uh permitting authority, if it lands here, would be the city of Montevista, specifically the Montevista City Council. Um, same thing goes for any other municipality in the San Luis Valley. And so that would be an enormous amount of material to have to digest. And for the clerks to uh have to sort through and uh. Time, effort, expense, et cetera, even though all this expense is to be paid by the uh applicant themselves. So the way that Article two uh three three dash two oh one. Uh, we drafted uh works is that the permitting authority. May authorize consultants to perform the administrative tasks of the permit administrator. Required by these regulations, the permit authority may appoint or deputize. Any personnel, attorney or consultants of the planning board. Or San Luis Valley Council of Governments, its authorized representatives of the permit authority to investigate. And determine the effect of an application upon the permit authority, adjust the amount. Of the guarantees set forth in section one dash three oh two, pay fees. To necessary consultants and administrative personnel orchestrate. The administration of underlying documents and procedures, scheduling, conduct hearings. Pursuant to section three dash two ten and three dash two one three through three dash two one nine, request and pay for transcripts. Draft and implement findings of fact, represent and defend the permit authority. At any appeals and conduct any legal proceedings necessary. To implement the purpose of these rules and regulations, the designation. Ordinance passed by the permit authority or the intergovernmental agreement executed by the permit authority in connection therewith. The joint planning board or COG will submit its designated permit administrator. From the San Luis Valley Council of Governments to be appointed by the permit authority by initiating these responsibilities. At the end of this sentence, authorized representatives of the joint planning board or COG. The joint planning board, COG accepts the responsibility if so requested by the planning authority. And that was initial by Tom McCracken, San Luis Valley COG, and Sarah Stoba, executive director of San Luis Valley COG. These um uh identical um. Rules and regulations with that provision in there have already been passed and accepted by the uh. Municipalities, at least of uh Del Norte, um South Fork, Sawatch, um. Blanca, uh, La Jara. Trying to remember any ones I left out there. Um, so we're kind of uh. This is going to wrap up, in other words, the the municipalities that we work with uh for um. The uh purpose of the ordinance itself and uh Sarah has uh. Become very helpful on this whole process, moving this along. She has been at some of the uh. Some of the uh hearings on this. Uh, so at this point. Um, do we have anybody who wants to be sworn testify regarding uh? The rules and regulations. Okay, um, either for or against. Okay, seeing none, then we will uh. Close this chapter of uh the uh rules and regulations for um. The water export ordinance and uh remand this matter to the. Uh Montevista City Council for action on. Ordinance number, what was it, nine uh twenty-eight. Thank you.
Just so everybody knows, Jeff Williamson is online. If we have anything, any questions.
Good evening, I don't have anything to add, uh beyond what Gene just summarized. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Um, we're back in session as council.
Uh, I'd make a motion to adopt ordinance nine twenty-eight. Ordinance, uh, the city of Montevista adopting laws and regulations of guidelines. Designating sites selected and constructed of major new domestic water systems and major extensions of existing domestic water systems. And municipal and industrial water projects as activities of state interest.
It's been moved and seconded to approve ordinance nine two eight and ordinance of the city of. Ordinance of the city council, the city of Montevista, Colorado, adopting rules and regulations as guidelines for. Designating site selection and construction of major new domestic water systems. And major extensions of existing domestic water systems and municipal and industrial water projects. As activities of state interest. Is there any more discussion?
I just have a question. You you didn't mention Alamosa. Is Alamosa the city adopted this?
Alamosa, I believe has adopted. I believe they have.
Okay.
The they're not one of the ones we've worked with, but I believe that they have.
Thank you.
Any other questions? You need a.
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson? Mayor Proton Segolak?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve ordinance nine twenty-eight.
All right, we will move on to uh resolutions. Resolution twenty twenty-four dash ten, supporting the formation. The San Luis Valley Aquatic Park and Recreation District.
Sorry, I have to read it off my phone.
You didn't memorize it. You didn't memorize it.
No, I didn't memorize it. Um, so the resolution before you is a resolution um support in support. Of the recreation for the San Luis Valley Aquatics Park and Recreation District. This is a resolution that was brought to you in a work session. Um, and now it's being brought to you in front of city council to make a motion in favor of. Or against to support the aquatics district. Um. Would you like me to read the resolutions? Um, the city council support the the formation of the park and the recreation district and the boundaries. Um, and if you choose to do so, we would pass this resolution tonight and forward it to. The Aquatics Center and it will go on the ballot for the November election.
Generally, who's the committee or who's the group?
Um, so Jenny Naring is the he- one of the head of the group. Um, but they have named themselves the aquatic park and recreation leaders. Um. And I'm trying, I can't remember the other gentleman's name, but he just took over the um the mortuary here in town as well. Steven.
Hunter.
Yes.
You had a question, didn't you?
I do. Uh, I have, actually have a problem. Uh, buying a meter, a fifteen thousand dollar meter. For the water of a property that we're not gonna own, have no ownership then. They'll be a separate entity from us with their own taxing district. I don't think that's a proper use of our enterprise funds. Going forward. Being supportive of it is one thing, buying stuff for them is is a different question.
And this was a suggested um gesture of support. Um, you can all decide to support this um or not. If you choose not to support this, we can remove this from the resolution. And either bring that resolution back in front of you at the next council meeting. Or we can remove that and you can approve the resolution with that removal.
Now, I I don't have an issue of doing that. I, you know, I. It it's gonna be a benefit to Montevista, assuming it's gonna be in close proximity of Montevi- um, sounds like it would be. And gonna bring. People to town. So, I'm a little different than you, Jason, in the sense that, right? I don't have an issue of making some, it's a pretty small contribution to. Many multi- a multimillion dollar project if it happens at all. And it's a big lift to even make it happen. Um, but, you know. Myself, I don't have an issue of making, you know, fifty thousand dollars is one end. Fair enough money on the other hand, it's not a fair enough.
That's the, that's the part that concerns me is for our community, fifty thousand dollars for individuals is a large amount of money.
You know, we're gonna sell a lot of water, you know.
Yeah, that said, we sell a lot of water to. Grow a shipper and their value to Montevista as an employer. We did not buy them a meter. Another large meter like that and the other entity, I I have a problem because we like the idea. That we are buying stuff for them. We could be in support of them. But.
We're short favoritism as far as businesses.
Well, yeah.
It's not really a business.
See, I gotta have their own income stream.
Right?
I I'm in agreeance with Lauren on this.
Essentially, it's a not-for-profit. I mean, they're not trying to make money to sell a product. So I think that's a distinction that I would make between these.
Well, I think that that they're not making. I don't know. I do think that it serves the community as well, but I I mean, I do understand what you can put on this too. Um I'm in favor of of it, but I do understand what Jason's coming with.
And the only other thing that we wanted to point out too is um to keep in mind that this doesn't encompass all of Rio Grande County. So they've excluded South Fork and we can't ask. They or they can't, I should not say we, but they can't ask for Del Norte to vote on this. Because Del Norte has already got their own recreation district. So this basically just encompasses Montevista. Rio Grande County and not the citizens of Montevista.
Not. Property or land with forty or more acres, right?
Correct.
Couple, there's some exclusion.
Right, there are some exclusions, correct.
What are your guys' viewpoints on it?
Well, I'm kind of on Jason. We got um other businesses committed to leave. He said, grower shipper. As far as the water meter goes, we can do other things to help. It would be. Not like favoritism is that per se, so. Especially that expense in there. I support park. But I think we want to be cautious what we throw out. So my opinion, if that was removed from this, I'm not opposed to that. As far as first cost of the water meter continued upon the difference, providing that adequate infrastructure, water main to the site. To provide such service. We we gotta provide water main.
Currently, there's not infrastructure to the particular property that they've asked for. What do they want to put the site and say? They or someone would have to extend the infrastructure to that site. Um right now, that infrastructure ends at kind of like, I mean, out of behind it. Um so somebody would have to do that. It would have to be a large enough line. To fill the pool. Other options is you can fill a pool from a fire hydrant. And use a hose. Um they were wanting something inside. And I think they're engineering, not knowing uh from the work session what they clearly wanted. Um so that was an option. Um the way they initially addressed city council where they were wanting. Two hundred and fifty thousand gallons of water and we weren't real sure if they wanted that free or if they just wanted access to it. The meter was the lesser of the means. The water is going to have to be done at least on an annual basis. I would guess probably more than annually. So and and that's a large chunk of water. Especially in the community where we adopted drought restructuring fund and residence.
Just so it's been my understanding that really what we're talking about is a water meter and a pretty large water meter.
So in the in um the council, where Renz talked about, um yeah.
Robert Vance, public works director. When growers shippers petitioned to annex into the city. Um the city required them to purchase an eight-inch meter. And that was their endearment, what they needed to do. What they had to do for their internal infrastructure. Um and the city did not buy that. They had to purchase that. Um they had to pay to have the plumbing and everything installed. So they they provided the expense for their, all of their infrastructure. So and that included the shit protected from the winter.
But we're not talking, we're not talking about giving the water.
I do not believe that this resolution is giving them anything other than access. To the water system if they extend the infrastructure.
The district would have to extend the infrastructure by the water. As far as, I mean, that's the fundamental impact on the city way of sewer, I guess, too, right?
And they'll have to in their engineering figure out what they're gonna do with, when they do need to drink.
Talking about the cost of the meter itself.
That's what, that's, that's my understanding.
Which? My understanding is could be somewhere between twelve and fifteen thousand dollars.
Depending on the size.
The distinction I make in this is this is a not a business.
But they're gonna be tack, they're gonna be a taxing entity. They're gonna set up their taxing district to fund this. If they're not setting up that taxing district to fully fund the project. Then I don't feel it's proper for us to take our funds from a water activity enterprise, which is already budgeted in deficit for the last three years. And in a sense, we would raise our rates. Although, yeah, fifteen thousand divided by the city of Montevista disappears, but it's still a large chunk of cash for individuals in the city. And we would raise our rates to pay for their water meter. I'm kind of thinking if there's. An organization or something out there that can raise funds. You know, for the project, you know, like we'll get sky high, you know, look how many people pitched in to. To make it happen. I'm kind of curious if, you know, there's something that. You know, a fund or something that can happen instead of us just giving it over. But at the same time, like, want it to happen, you know, so I'm kind of torn.
So there may be, but the kind of the difference between this and Sky High. Is um like Jason said, this is going to be on the ballot and they are going to be their own separate taxing district. They are going on as a recreation district.
So they need this resolution.
They're asking for support.
What's a letter of support is what it is.
And they have to have it to be put on the ballot. So their timeframe is very narrow.
Well, I don't think, they don't need a better.
I don't think they need the letter of support for, to be put on the ballot. They're, they're looking for letters of support. To reach out to the other, to the community and they've taken it. I don't, have they taken it to the. Board of County Commissioners?
My understanding is took it to the B O C C after our work session, yes. Now, I look at this slightly differently because I know we have local businesses and stuff like that, but we're also trying to gain recreation in this town. And 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 a recreational draw to this town. So I I would love to show the support by this, but like I said, I know where you guys are coming from too. It does turn me up a little bit. I am leaning more towards. Doing it than not doing it, but.
We gave money to support the uh. The movie theater. I don't see a difference.
We own it.
We're trying to get rid of it.
Well, yeah, we still own it.
But there's no taxable income off.
We 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 gave them money to try to make it a viable business is what we did.
And we own it, and we own it, and there's a distinction there. It's just like we gave money to the golf course. We own it too. I'd make a motion to approve. The letter of the support, removing the fifty thousand dollar meter from that.
Removing to be.
Expected to be.
Second.
It's been moved in seconded to approve uh resolution twenty twenty four dash ten. And around. Mending it. Cost of the water meter continued upon the district, providing the adequate infrastructure, water main to the site to provide such service. Is there any more discussion?
When do they have to have this? Support by or so maybe put on the ballot, I think. Sorry, here pretty quick.
Um I don't believe there's a timeframe, but they are asking for it fairly quickly.
Well, we can discuss donations or whatever after.
I was gonna say, there is a possibility of donating there to their cause and this is all settled.
We got a fund for that.
Yeah.
You go.
Oh, we may have already spent it. I think you spent it on four H this year.
Is there any more discussion on those guys? You need a?
Councillor Howard?
No.
Councillor Lorenz?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve resolution twenty twenty four dash ten. Supporting the formation of the San Luis Valley Aquatics Park and Recreation District. Removing the clause of donating the fifteen thousand dollar meter. Motion carries with four ayes and one nay. Lauren Howard, councillor, voting no.
That's what it's all about, having a discussion and talking about. Thank you, guys. Um we will move on to contracts, agreements and leases. Contract for concrete for Faith Inkley Veteran Memorial Park. Award to Alcon Construction.
It's actually, yeah, I'm sorry.
For the concrete, where they talking?
You gonna report me? Okay, so I have been tasked with um trying to help complete the Faith Inkley Memorial Veterans Park. Um I have been working on meeting with several contractors out at the park to complete. The walkway and the pavers. Um so before you is a contract that is for Alcon Construction. Um I did meet with a Sullivan Quality Concrete and elevation concepts. And we have a contract for the amount of thirty five thousand six hundred and eighty one dollars and ninety one cents. For the completion of the walkway and the concrete for Faith Inkley Park. Um there is going to be no money out of our budget for this. So the project originally started on March tenth in twenty eleven. Over the past few years, many donations have been made from local businesses. And residents to help finish the park. Um. Over the last month, we've been working on getting donations and sponsors. And Colette Scaff found out that we were picking up and completing the park. And in memory of Ray Scaff and from Margaret Scaff Family Funds, they have donated thirty thousand dollars to help complete the park. So with the sponsorships that we have from our local vendor, our local businesses and from our residents. We have enough money to complete the park with the concrete. So the walkway will be colored and then over by the restrooms will be um just regular concrete. So before you tonight, oh, and I guess I should fill in the rest of it. Um where the monument is will be pavers. So we're in the middle of selling bricks. And the brick orders end August twenty eighth. And right now, I'll share the rest of that in my report, but. We have quite a few bricks sold and I've been working with North River Greenhouse. To complete the pavers and with John Glass for the K I As. And Alcon Construction agreed to work with North River Greenhouse to complete the project. They will have the project completed by November eleventh. And we are going to invite everybody back who purchases a paper and we're gonna hopefully have a celebration. On November eleventh. So we'll be planning another event for November eleventh or around the Veterans Day. Um but they'll be working with North River Greenhouse to complete the park. So before you, I ask that you would approve the contract to Alcon Construction. For the finished work of concrete for thirty five thousand six hundred and eighty one dollars and ninety one cents.
So that's one thousand seven hundred eighty five square feet. Is that the whole path?
It's the whole path. Yeah, minus the center where the monument stands.
Yeah.
Cause that's where the bricks will go.
Pavers are gonna be.
Make a motion to award uh the contract for the concrete for Faith Inkley Veterans and Water Park to Alcon Construction.
Second.
You got it.
Second.
Been moved in seconded to approve the contract for the concrete for Faith Inkley Veterans Memorial Park to award it to Alcon Construction. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Councillor Howard?
Yes.
Councillor Lorenz?
Yes.
Councillor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the contract for concrete for the completion of Faith Inkley Veteran Memorial Park to Alcon Construction.
Good. I have made financials. I usually always miss Anita, so I caught it. So you were lucky.
I was gonna ask Anita if she wants to get a loan. She's getting some good being up here. I think she is gonna move my. So I can't walk my task, so she said she can do that. I got it, yeah. Uh, good evening, council. Uh we're gonna present the main financial. As of the end of May, the city has completed forty percent of the twenty twenty four fiscal year. Uh cash balance in the main checking account is. Three million forty eight thousand two hundred and sixty nine dollars for the water fund, three hundred and seventy six thousand eighty five dollars. And the sewer fund, one million eighty five thousand one hundred and seventy six dollars. Revenue in excess of expenditures for the general fund, two hundred and fifty nine thousand one hundred and seventy dollars. Water fund, twenty one thousand five hundred. Sewer fund, two hundred and one thousand nine hundred and five. Uh total expenditures as a percent of the approved budgeted budget for the general fund is forty percent, water fund twenty three percent and sewer fund twenty four percent. Counts receivable. Uh general fund increase for May of twenty twenty three. Of twenty eight thousand was pretty much related to the correction of course, receivable records of property tax receivable decrease. And an increase in sales and highway tax receivables. The water fund increase, uh twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty six, related to a slight increase in receivable for utility billings. And a correction to accounts for doubtful accounts. Uh sewer fund increase of twenty thousand five hundred and eighty five is related to the receivable for utility buildings. Counts payable, AP consists of operating expenses and employee benefits payable. Uh for example, health insurance, supplemental insurance and accrued comp balances that are calculated beginning of the year. The general fund increase uh for this month is primarily the balance due for the carpet purchase. Uh that one. The whole uh expense has been put in, uh even though we've only paid for half of it. Uh the water fund showed a decrease as well as the sewer fund. Uh comparative revenues, the general fund increase overall of three hundred and forty six thousand nine hundred and ninety two compared to last year. Um due to tax revenue, reimbursement of property tax, Rio Grande County and city sales tax and the highway user tax. That increase um is approximately a hundred and sixty three thousand at this point. We've had a slight increase in business licenses and building permits. And we've used ARCA funds for our boiler units. And we've used ARCA funds for our boiler units, mosquito sprayers, PD lighting, and several power upgrades. Uh, we've gotten federal grants for PD drug testing equipment. Recruiting and retention of about seventy-five thousand, and we've also received some IHOP grant funds in there for about sixteen thousand. We've had an increase in sky-high uh rental and miscellaneous rental of about sixteen thousand, so. Um, the general fund increase is pretty good. Uh, water fund, we've had an overall increase of about thirty-two thousand related to increased charges for services. And an increase in our water lease revenue. Uh, sewer fund overall increase of a hundred and sixty-eight thousand related to. State grant funds for um the wastewater engineering, uh increased charges for services and new water taps. Uh, general fund revenues monthly comparison, our average is about four hundred and forty-five thousand nine hundred and eighty dollars per month. Uh, property tax accounts for the increase in February and April. Along with the property tax reimbursement from Senate Bill twenty-two that we talked about last month in April. Move on on to taxes, yeah, here with me. Uh, general property tax revenue took a bit of a dive in May first, I expect because April collections were a bit higher than last year or. Bit higher than last year in April. Um, on average, the city is on track to be just slightly higher in property tax revenue over last year. Compared to May of twenty-twenty-three, the city has collected seventeen thousand dollars more in twenty-two. Reagland County Sales Tax Revenue was coming in with somewhat somewhat lower starting out the year than projected estimates. However, the last two actual receipts were higher. And if we look at the year-to-date through May, we sit at about a hundred dollars higher compared to May of twenty-twenty-three. Uh, city sales tax revenue continues to trend higher than the last two years. Year-to-date, May of twenty-four is approximately thirty-four thousand dollars higher than last year. So that's pretty good on these two. Total tax revenue includes all tax revenue, property tax, sales, specific ownership, franchise, and occupational tax. The pattern for the first quarter of twenty-twenty-four shows a fairly consistent trend. With a spike enabled due to the receipt of the tax reimbursement. Overall tax revenue is up compared to May of twenty-twenty-three by a hundred and forty-eight thousand. With a hundred and ten thousand attributable to the state tax reimbursement. Expenditures, overall expenditures in the general fund have increased through May due to. Um, police department now being fully staffed compared to a shortage last year, big shortage. The increase in staff for Sky High, increase in wages and benefits in all departments. Increase in general liability insurance. Purchasing drug testing and investigation equipment for PD, that was all reimbursed through grants. Purchase of the boiler units, lighting for PD and H fact for the tower. Paid through for paid for through ARCA funds. The holiday lights reimbursed through donations. Uh, engineering services for planning and power upgrades for the parks. Uh, water fund increases in expenses mainly due to wages and benefits. Um, some and some increases in professional services and general liability insurance. Uh, that's pretty much the same for the sewer fund. The general fund expenditures average is three hundred and ninety-four thousand ninety-six dollars per month. And May's expenditures align with that average right in the middle. Uh, comparing monthly budgeted amounts for expenditures at forty-two percent of the budget year, we are under budget by two percent in the general fund. And all the departments are in line or under that budget. The current ratio is current, the current ratio is three dollars and ninety-three percent, ninety-three cents of current assets for every dollar of current liabilities. And we currently have eight point three six months of operating expenses in the general funds. Um, total unassigned fund balance. I think that's supposed to be eight, eight point nine months, not eight point three six. I have it two different places. Any questions? Sorry if I talk too fast. No questions? I ask for you to approve, what's that?
Very well explained. I have a request.
What?
Can you make the numbers just a little bitters like a reading?
We can try and do that.
I saw it going like, it was like, we'd span.
Well, I keep thinking this was Anita's, Anita's report. I'm gonna try and do my own thing, so I'll work on that, Lauren. Thank you. I just ask that you approve the, if you see that.
My motion to approve the report is presented.
It's been moved and seconded to approve uh the May financial report. Is there any more discussion? You need a?
Counselor Howard?
Yes.
Counselor Lorenz?
Yes.
Counselor Watson?
Aye.
Mayor Protem Segola?
Aye.
Mayor Becker?
Aye.
Motion carries to approve the May financials.
Okay, we'll move on to staff proposals, reports, and actions. City clerk?
Hi, how are you doing?
No. No, ma'am.
So I do apologize. I actually have a lot to go over with you guys today. I'll try to make it quick. Um, so in the clerk's office, we've been extremely busy. Um, so thank you for noticing that the business licenses are up. Um, we have quite a few new businesses in town. Um, including storefronts and home-based businesses. Um, but they are up. We have issued fifteen new business licenses in the last month. We have issued eight new contractor licenses. And we've issued twenty-nine new vendor permits. So, um, those are up quite a bit this year. The new mercantile that opened at sixteen thirty-six Grand Avenue, um. We have issued a ton of per vendor permits for them. Um, a lot of vendors came in and did just a one-time vendor permit for the first time they were open. And then they returned to purchase a full-year permit so they could do the full year. So we have quite a few vendors that are set up for that. Um, something I'd like for council to think about and something that I'm gonna work on for next year. We had quite a few vendors that wanted to set up for Stampede. We don't have a place for them. Stampede came to Gigi and asked that. We not allow vendors in the right-of-way on Sky High Trail or along Sherman. Because it takes away from the vendors at the carnival and it takes away from the vendors who are inside Stampede. If you were down at Stampede, you saw that there were vendors that were there. If vendors were located on private property, we did not make a move. Um, I myself made two vendors move out of the right-of-way. So, we need to figure out something we can do to help our local vendors. Because most of the vendors that do come and get vendor license for Stampede. Are a lot of local vendors. Um, and that's the one time of the year that they can make their money too. Um, so that's something that we need to kind of figure out to try to help our local vendors as well. I have a lot of local vendors. That wanna park in the right-of-way for the railroad. They're across from Sonic and Alalta. I've asked the railroad several times for permission. Um, I've been told, we don't care. I've asked for permission and writing. Um, I have not received that yet. At this point in time, we have taken the position that vendors can set up there. Um, as long as they have a valid vendor permit through the clerk's office. Um, but we make them very well aware that if the railroad comes through and says you have to leave, then they have to leave. We also tell them that make sure that you are not set up close to the railroad. Because there's a safety issue there if the train comes through and make sure that none of your customers park near the railroad. Um, so as of right now, I haven't had any issues. So hopefully I can get something in writing from the railroad, but as of right now, that's the sand we've taken on that property. I'm gonna send you all this. And this is something, it's nice, but I can read it. So these are the new laws that were enacted this year. They're fun. Um, I think that Gigi's gonna have each department head report on the laws that affect our each department. Um, in the report that I gave you all, there are three major laws that affect. The clerk's department. The first one is uh Senate Bill twenty-four dash twenty, zero, two, zero. It's the alcohol beverage delivery takeout. That will end July first, twenty-twenty-five. So when COVID hit. Governor Polis passed a law that allowed all businesses who had alcohol could. Send alcohol in a sealed container for takeout and delivery. That is going to end. So that rule will. It's done. Um, they are trying to reestablish it. Where hotel restaurant license holders can still do it. But as of July first, twenty-twenty-five, that rule will no longer exist. The other rule is Senate Bill twenty-four dash two-three-one, the alcohol beverage liquor and advisory group, which you all are. Um, please take the time, I'm not gonna go over everything. But there are quite a few things that you all are gonna need to know when. Sitting as the advisory board for the liquor license. Um, a couple of big things that. Will affect us, um. We did not allow liquor sales on Christmas Day. That is something that's gonna be allowed now through the state. We are looking at passing a caterers license and an entertainment license. So that is gonna probably be coming forward to you all. Um, especially the entertainment license, that is something we're looking at doing for Sky High. Um, caterers license, that's something that some of our local restaurants. Will probably be bringing forward to the Liquor Authority Board. Um, Baldos is one of our big ones. Baldos is a big caterer for events out at Sky High. And right now, they cannot bring liquor into their catering. But this is something that is going to allow for them to apply for. But they will have to have it approved for through the state and then through the Liquor Authority Board.
Do you have a sense what's the difference between a catering license and an entertainment license? And I could read it later, it's a big deal.
So the entertainment license, um, I can tell you, cause I'm looking into it for Sky High. The entertainment license is for um a business that does entertainment. Um, so like for Sky High, we could do, we could. Apply for an entertainment license that would allow for us to hold our own liquor license. But it would allow us for us to turn it on and off. So when Stampede comes in, we can turn our liquor license off and give them their liquor license. A catering license is, like I said, for like Baldos.
Yeah.
So when they come in, they can bring their alcohol and have the sales from their alcohol versus. Somebody who hires them to cater their wedding. They don't have to hire somebody else to cater their alcohol as well.
Yeah, thanks.
Um, the next one is House Bill twenty-four thirteen seventy-one. Um, that is a more uniform local massage facility regulation. So in the past, a massage parlor or a massage facility could come in and just get a business license. Um, that law has changed. They now have to have a license from the state showing that they are licensed massage therapists. Um, we will not allow a massage parlor to be within. City limits. That's something that we're working on writing an ordinance for as well. Um, so that law has changed. The next one is House Bill twenty-one eleven-ten. This is a big one for us. This is the ADA compliance house bill. Um, this is something that Brandon Gallegos, Brandon Das, and myself have been working on. Um, we have already completed and thanks a bunch to Brandon Gallegos. Um, we have completed the digital accessibility plan. It was supposed to have been completed by July first and sent into the state. Um, they extended that date for one year, but we have completed it and it's already been turned in. So we're a little bit ahead of the game, which is great. Um, we did receive a grant to allow us to purchase a program. That will allow us to run our documents through the system. So before we put a document on our website. We are, we have the program to run the document through the website or through, through it. To make sure it's ADA compliant and put it on the website. Um, we have already put the ADA compliant. Um, statement on the website so that if anybody goes onto the website. And there are documents that do not have text attached to them. Or there's pictures that don't have text attached to them or colors that they can't see. Um, there is a statement on there saying that we are working on our website. Um, so that covers us for any lost pieces. Um, we are going to be having training that we are gonna hold with staff. Um, we understand that this may require some adjustments. To our current process and workflow, but it's crucial. That we prioritize accessibility to ensure equal access to information and services to all the members of our community. So if you hear somebody saying, oh, the website's not active or the website doesn't have this. We are in the process of updating each and every single page. And that's myself and I T, so. Um, municipal courts. So we currently have a hundred and fifty-seven cases. In the courts. Um, we've taken in twenty thousand two hundred and fifty-four dollars and six cents in payments. We've done twelve bench warrants that we've issued since January first. And we have only dismissed seventeen out of a hundred and fifty-seven cases. You all got the CML packet in front of you. Um, the big thing, Dale, I just wanted to remind you that if you would like to attend the Mayor's Leadership Academy. The registration is July thirty-first. So if you're interested in attending that, it's August first. Or August eighth, sorry, August eighth. So if you're interested in attending that, please let me know and I'll get you registered. Okay, now for the fun stuff. Um, and I'm gonna read this just because. I've put a lot of work into this and I just don't wanna miss anything, so I wanna read this. Um, on July twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four is a big date and it's drawing super close. Sponsor deadline has passed, but we're still looking for donations until July twentieth, twenty-twenty-four. We currently have thirty-six vendors and nine of those are food trucks. We have closed the registration for food trucks, but our general vendors are still open until July twenty-fourth. We ask for sponsors in, we've asked for sponsors in three different levels, the Patriot, the Liberty, and the Freedom. As we journey down the path of completion, we have fourteen sponsors that totals five thousand two hundred dollars. As we journey down the path of completion, we have fourteen sponsors that totals five thousand two hundred dollars. We also really received a large donation in memory of Ray Skeff from Colette Skeff and the Margaret Skeff Family Fund for thirty thousand dollars. We have several donors that have donated cash and the donors that have donated gift certificates and different items that we will give away at the event. This is for the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park fundraiser. Activities that will take place at this event include poker run, the car and bike sho- bike show, the cornhole tournament, which we currently have twelve teams registered, a bounce house, a dunk tank, DJ, live music throughout the day, a drum duo, many cheerleaders and dancers from Miss K's Performing Arts Studio. The Monovista Fire Department will be there and have water games. And we will have horses there from the. Uh, we're gonna have horses there from the Lucky Shoe Riding Club. Um, they're gonna have their trailer set up so the kids can take pictures on the horses and also receive rides on the horses. The Colorado Farm Brew and a wide range of vendors can all will be there and a wide ra- range of vendors will help you shop till you drop. Special thanks to the Brining Sears Delta Center for designing and making the T-shirts that will be on sale at the event that day for twenty-five dollars. This is, all the donations will be given back to the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park. They have asked for nothing in return. Also, the cornhole tournament is being sponsored by Elijah Sandoval Construction out of Se- out of Sawatch, who has donated five hundred dollars. And Hes Salisbury out of Pueblo has organized the tournament and twenty-five percent of all funds will be going back to the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park. Coors has made us banners to help thank all of our sponsors and donors that will be displayed at Chapman Park, Marsh Park, and Fulton White Park. I would like to thank Larry Gardner, who has devoted so much time in making sure that the car and bike show and the poker run are successful. And for all the staff who has helped put the event together. Excuse me, and most important, thank you to all the sponsors, donors, supporters, and volunteers to make this happen. We have a total of sixty-two bricks as of seven seventeen twenty-four that have been sold. Bricks for the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park can still be purchased until August twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-four. If you are a veteran or you know a veteran that you wish to honor, please make sure you order your bricks soon. We will be completing the Faith Pinkley Veterans Memorial Park. And all bricks will be laid by Veterans Day and we hope to invite everyone back to celebrate the end of a long journey. But the beginning of a lifetime of learning.
Is there a number of bricks that we want?
As many as we can sell. Um, so you can order, so you can go to the city website and get the brick order form. Or you can go to polarengraving.com, City of Monovista. So we have a website that's set up specifically for the City of Monovista to order the, to order the bricks. Um, the only thing we ask is that the bricks are strictly to um, memorialize veterans and that there's no advertisement on the bricks.
You have, uh, are there order forms like that on the union?
There are. There, we've, we've, they're all over the place. I think I know where they're at. They're all over the place. We've taken them all over the place. Please come and join us on the twenty-seventh. We have huge variety of food trucks. We have nine of them. It's from ten AM to six PM.
Okay, Public Works. And I'm gonna consider legal boring than that, but so. Good evening, Council. Um, it's been really kind of a long time since I've provided you with a written update, so. Tonight I provided one in your thing and I'll just kinda touch on some of the bigger ones. Um, as Public Works, we continue to operate short-staffed. Um, we made an offer today for wastewater treatment technician one. Um, so hopefully we'll be fully staffed if that individual accepts the offer. Our wastewater plant has historically been operated by three people. It's two technicians and the supervisor. Um, we have been out since March. Um, so it's been the supervisor and an employee that I'd like to make a shout out to, Brian Wright, um, who was an entry-level employee. Um, he has just absolutely incredibly stepped up in this time to not only continue to do the jobs that he was supposed to do, but he stepped up into more of an advanced role and handling um, weekend shifts and filling in when Bob needed to take some time off. Um, and, and really going above and beyond what it play grade actually is, so. At this time, I'd like to really make a shout out to Brian Wright. I, I'm so proud of what he's been able to do in the last few months to keep us moving and, and keep that plant operating the way it needs to. Um, another person that I would like to highlight is our Streets of Parks Supervisor, Andrew Valenzuela. Um, he's been just about six months now. At the end of this month, he'll be his sixth month. And as a supervisor, and I have to say, he continues to impress me. It's, it's really nice to have someone that is out and about and I can honestly say it's one of the few times in my career when I've actually had to pull an individual aside and say, you need to slow down. You're gonna burn yourself out. Throughout this entire prep for Stampede, he was out. Every time I'd go home, didn't matter if it was after a council meeting, seven thirty, eight o'clock. I would find him on my way home somewhere, either fixing a no parking sign or going in and he'll have a weed eater and he's weed eating in North Washington. What are you doing at seven thirty at night? Go home. So it's really nice. I, I'm really proud of what he's been able to do. So in the other divisions of Public Works, our utility crews have been mainly the ones that are short-staffed. They still continue to manage to do the maintenance requirements such as the meter reads and our leak repairs. We've seen the marked increase in our new water and sewer taps this year. We've already done seven. And as of today, I have two more in the queue, so we'll have nine, which is usually what our best year has been so far. Our best year so far since in the thirteen years I've been here is ten. So we're at nine this year and we'll have. So, um, things are moving. We've got two brand new ones that came in today over on Redtail. So we are looking not only terror of the soul, but Redtail's starting to develop. We have gotten most everything done with our reeds, but I'm just gonna tell Council. Um, our meter reading equipment is becoming problematic for us. Um, it's not being um, supported by the manufacturer. They are slowly phasing out the touch read systems. Um, this past year due to lead times for touch read meters, I actually wound up buying twenty-four meters that were on a shelf from the city of Oklahoma City to fulfill a need because they were telling me that new meters on the touch read scale weren't high in priority, so it'd be twenty-seven weeks out to get a meter. So, so that's, that doesn't really fit what we're doing. So we're as, we're gonna have to start really seriously looking at things. Um, in our parks, we are in full summer, summer mode. Unfortunately, I just gave up on trying to hire all three seasonals. I wasn't able to do it. We offered positions to four to pass the pre-employment drug test. And two did not, and the other applicants we had just, they weren't gonna do it, pass it anyway, so we didn't even make an extended offer, so. Um, we're just going with the two that we have. They're doing a good job. Um. The Chapman Park sprinkler system seems to be giving us the most fits right now and then for some reason right around Stampede, I'm not sure exactly what happened, but we started seeing some brown shot spots showing up on Montez Park. So we've increased the water, um, put some more of the fertilizer out, so, um, so hopefully we'll get that back green the way it needs to be. The, the rains this year have really highlighted our storm drain issues. Um, the last storm that we had on Tuesday caused some fairly significant flooding throughout the city. Um, including the brand new Patterson Dennis Streets. We had some backups there. Um, I've got a company coming in with a camera and a, and a back trailer, and not trailer, but a back truck to look at the fourth and see if we have enough structure somewhere. Because on Patterson, we actually had some damage to a property. Um, it flooded so bad through there, the entire road was completely covered. So, and on that particular area, everything was running so heavy and, and bad that the Four Street Line couldn't do it and it was actually back siphoning down the new, um, storm drain that we put in on Patterson and coming out the inlet on the east side of the road. So, um, so we have some problems. On the Dennis Street, um, everything was just pushing as much as it did. I, I went ahead and pulled some manholes and we had some six, eight inch, uh, little fountains going on, on the street, so it was kinda neat. Um, the manhole called about on the highway came off. We actually had, um, the grates on Adams, that second and Adams. They actually popped off. There was enough water pressure on there that they actually pulled the grates off. Um, luckily we had another drain on third, it ran down, but third, it drained alright. Um, so we're working on those. The other thing we did is on mosquito spraying, and I'm gonna throw this out to Council because we had a series of meetings last year and we've kinda modified our operations. And I'm not sure we're meeting the goals, to be quite simple. Um, so I would like Council, if you have any opinions, please, um, feel free to email me or in this forum if you feel the need to. Um, just kinda let me know what you think and what you're hearing from the populace out there. Um, the anvil that we purchased this year. Um, I'm, like I said, not sure the effectiveness. Um, it has proven as far as smell, my smell complaints are almost zero. Um, so, but I'm not sure we're meeting our goals as far as eradicating as many of the mosquitoes as we possibly can. So I, I'm, I'm gonna probably go back to the drawing board next year and do some things a little differently. Um, unfortunately, we have used about twice of the anvil as much as we do for the Fife and I. So, um, money-wise, that's gonna be another thing we're gonna have to look at. Um, the last item that I kinda wanted to update you guys are on our projects. There's several of them. Um, I just finished the Patterson Dennis Street, um, walked through today. That was the final. So we will be advertising that week for final payment for the contractor. Um, everything was acceptable. There's a little bit of sod that we need to kinda watch. Um, but everything else was going pretty good. Um, so we're gonna go ahead and advertise that to two weeks and see if we can make final payment for them, so that will be coming to the city council for you to approve the final payment. Um, the multimodal is, we just passed the thirty percent mark. It is a little bit behind the schedule and we're getting fairly close to being over budget on design. We kinda knew that going in that we were going to be over budget. Um, C dot has agreed that all we're gonna do is reduce the, the construction scale a little bit. So, um, we're okay money-wise on that as far as the grant is concerned. Um, still gonna see if we could work with the contract and kind of slow some of these expenses down. Um, but everything as of this week was submitted to C dot. All the changes, so we are now, they're gonna go through and hopefully approve all the changes and we'll be heading towards sixty percent in our next milestone, which is the office review. And then once they get through the office review, um, it'll be just a matter of touching up any of their comments at that time. And then the project will get final design as far as the engineer stamps and will be available to go out to bid. So, um, so we're getting close there. Also, um, the Alaway project is also under design. Um, next week we have our thirty percent on that project. And, um, that is going exactly as it was expected and is one hundred percent on budget. The two air force projects that we have this year, um, the federal administration has asked us to delay the start of those projects. You, if you remember back in May, you awarded the project the ACI. Um, the feds have come in and they've asked us to delay, so we worked with Todd. He was gracious enough to delay. We've pushed the project back to the Au- August twelfth. Um, and the thing is, is that the federal government has not issued the funding for the FAA. So until they do that, all grants and everything would are kinda put off. So that project is still planning to unfold, but we don't have a commitment from the FAA to actually go forward and issue the final grant. Um, the E O C project was at Work Davis Engineering and we are trying to make sure everybody's scheduled so we can get the kickoff meeting and we kinda just talk with everybody and everybody just wanted to wait till after Stampede, get that over with. So we'll be getting hot and heavy on that. And then lastly, I'll just open it up for any questions you might have or anything, comments, any issues that you see that can take some notes on, see if we can fix. Council, thank you.
PD. You thought you need to have a really extensive range of information to deliver. Well firstly, I'd like to say thank you for the, uh, the warm welcome to Monovista. The, uh, the community's been very welcoming. I got dumped in the, uh, the beginning of the Stampede. Given many warnings about the event, what to expect. And the mayor did not disappoint. You probably all saw me, uh, out there in the, in the arena with the mayor. I did try and beat him, but he's got a lot more experience than me with those drunk goggles, I think. Uh, moving on, um, before I go into my limited report, because I only have limited, uh, knowledge of what's been going on so far in the ten minutes I've been here. Um, I wanted to just expand on what you know was talking about with uh, laws that are changing, things that are, that are going to affect the city. Um, one of the things that came to my desk yesterday was some information from the former chief here, George Binkfelder, about some, they call skilled gaming. I don't know if you've heard of it before, but it's basically gambling. And they're trying to manipulate what they call it and what the game is to try and sneak underneath the, the legislation to, uh, to gamble without, uh, without issuing the state. So based on that information, I reached out to the senior director of, uh, just trying to recall what he actually called himself. He's the, he's the senior director of special business for the state. And basically, in a nutshell, he is the director of the state as far as gaming, horse racing, dog racing, things like that is concerned. Um, and he's a contact that I had before I got here. So I reached out to him to ask him what his thoughts were and his agency's perspective on this skilled gaming issue. Uh, and he said the division of gaming is in the, is in alignment with both of the articles that, that I was forwarded by George, which basically suggests that, uh, something need be done about these machines. He said, we are encouraging local action to address. He said, we are encouraging local action to address illegal gaming and illegal casinos. But we are supporting further clarification language from legislature. I would encourage you to work with your town council to pass local ordinances prohibiting this type of business. Comparing this activity to Chuck E. Cheese is at best comical. And that was something that was mentioned in these articles. Where the owners of the machines were comparing themselves to Chuck E. Cheese. Um. The business that's doing this is based in Puebla. So they're very close. And I believe they've attempted to sneak into Alamosa. So we'd be next in line. Alamosa last night passed an ordinance to, uh, prevent this from occurring in their city. So. I would ask you start putting some thought, a bit of research into it. I'll forward some information to our city attorney. On this issue, um, if you'd like to take a look at this skill gaming. Cause it's going to become an issue. Here in one of this, in my opinion. Um. Basically, all I want to touch on tonight is a basic analysis of the stampede when I started, um. Disorderly actions. There were. Two instances of disorderly actions on Thursday, the eleventh of July, both of which occurred of a dance. The details of the first event were not available at the time of writing this document. Except that a male was trespassed from the premises and from the event. The second event involved a male who did not live in the region. Recording and photographing the buttocks of females at the event, which naturally was unacceptable. Uh, Friday night, the twelfth, we had, uh, two events as well. One was at the carnival and the other at the dance. The first event involved a fight between a juvenile female, actually involved a fight between two juvenile females at the carnival. With the information at the time, the two juvenile females were charged with disorderly conduct. And they were also removed from the venue. At the time of writing, additional information has come forward about the involvement of two other juvenile females in that particular incident. The final result has been determined that the two female juveniles would be charged with disorderly conduct and another two for assault. The second incident involved a minor incident at the dance, which resulted in private security trespassing a male party from the venue and from the event. On Saturday, the thirteenth, there were two disorderly actions at carnival. The event at the carnival involved a number of parties attempting to prevent a juvenile from having a vape pen. Confiscated by Monovista Police Department officers. The end result was the vape pen was confiscated and three parties were trespassed from the event. The second incident involved a fight between two juvenile females. The fight resulted in one of the females being charged with disorderly conduct. Moving on to alcohol related events and incidents. Uh, there were two incidents of underage parties possessing alcohol and both took place on Saturday, the thirteenth. The first incident involved a juvenile female, seventeen years of age. And, uh, she was charged with disorderly conduct relating to one of the previous events that we were referring to. Her witness advised that she'd been drinking that evening. She was, uh, given a PBT. And she had a BAC of point one four one. So she was, she was fairly intoxicated. The second incident involved two male parties, both age twenty. Having been found possessing beer, which at some point had been purchased by somebody else on their behalf at the event. Both were administered a PBT and it was found that one had a BAC of point zero two seven. And the other point one zero nine. All reported fights that took place at the event this year were perpetrated by juvenile females with a total of six juveniles involved. There were also three suspects for underage possession of alcohol. There were a total of nine parties that were trespassed from the venue and the event. And a total of three events that resulted in criminal charges. There were no arrests or transports to jail, no warrant arrests, no weapon incidents. Uh, no detox holds. And in total, the number of situations in this event was exceptionally low. We did find with the increased security measures at the, uh, Sky High Complex. Uh, one taser that was confiscated from someone trying to enter the facility. Uh. On June twenty four. A Facebook post was put out about prohibited items and actions. It was widely shared and publicized. This post was shared again on July the ninth and it was reshared. The information for prohibited items seemed fairly well received on review of the comments, with the exception of stroll as being listed as a prohibited item. The advanced notice of prohibited items and actions is likely to be a factor in why there were no weapons involved this year. It is the belief of the Monovista Police Department that the security screening that was implemented on Thursday to the dance. Where all patrons entering the facility were screened with the assistance of private security. Monovista Police Department Officers, fourteen Colorado Rangers that we, uh, we brought in for the event. And the Rio Grande Sheriff's Office was very effective. The Monovista Police Department do have, it's not just the Monovista Police Department, uh, as a whole, but it's our officers, supervisors and command staff. We have concerns about some ad hoc changes that were made at the stampede that contradicted our operational orders. Uh, that had a direct impact on public safety, in our opinion, at the event. And we plan on discussing these issues with the Stampede Committee and city officials. At the respective, uh, debrief and action, after action reviews. With a view to addressing those concerns, raising them, addressing them and preventing any compromise of public safety at any future stampede. It seems that each year there's, there's improvements made and that's what we need to keep working on. Uh, that's all I have on the, uh, stampede and for my report tonight. Did you have any questions that I could address? Would you like me to read the rest of this?
Again.
Well, I appreciate the, uh, as I said, I appreciate the warm welcome and it's been. It's been great to see the professional conduct of city employees in the time that I've been here. Uh, the police department officers, city council, seeing some great debate here on issues you don't agree with. You kept it professional, um. The free speech of citizens coming up here and voicing things that they may not, may not necessarily agree with. And. That's all part of this great country. I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I T. Kristen.
Well, just the glasses, I'm still getting used to them. Alright, well, good evening, council. I don't have a whole lot to report on tonight. I, uh, was going to blame you, Nita, for having a long report. Or for me having a short report because of which, but, uh, in reality, we decided last second I'd do council tonight. Cause DOS was out at Stampede flying the drone for them. So, uh. With that, I'll point out a few things that we've been working on as of late. Uh, it looks like we. Had some network issues in one of our units over in the police department and had to go through and get that reconfigured. We've had some AT and T related woes that we've had to go through and fix as well. That seems to be a common thing though, or theme, I should say. Uh, DOS finally built his first desktop for himself in I T. We have a, a tradition in I T where every five years we'll replace computers. But in I T, we build our own. He finally hit that point where he got to do that. And I know he was really excited about it. But the big thing throughout the last month is just preparing for stampede, putting up cell boosters, trying to clean up the network. We have C L O coming in to put in their own wifi out inside of the, uh, the rodeo ground itself as. They're a little more well equipped to handle such a large capacity of people on a win than tune it back down when we're not using it. So. Just a lot of that, I know, uh, it's been interesting for us in I T with, uh, the major culture shift with our director changing and. We're about to hit budget season, so we'll see how that goes. But other than that, I don't have a whole lot for you guys tonight. So. Leave it for, uh, questions for you guys.
Good, anyone?
Alright, well, on that note, you guys have a great weekend. Yeah, it's great seeing you guys too.
City Attorney.
That's getting bigger. Mayor. Well, first of all, it was a pleasure getting to know your, your chief, um. I met him out at the parade out there and, um, uh, loved people with a sense of humor. Uh, I told him that, uh, one of my parishioners, um. Was with Shank, talks exactly like he does. His response was, I am so sorry. But, uh, I think we're going to be a good team. Um. So, um, okay, starting out municipal court, thirty two cases, this was average. Um, harassments, disorderly conduct, trespassing, shoplifting, drug houses, uh, traffic, uh, dangerous dogs. Uh, drug paraphernalia, underage, uh, possession of marijuana, uh, weeds and brush, salt, uh. And we had to try the first speeding case that I've had to try in probably twenty or thirty years. Um, we had offered a reduction on the case from a six pointer to a four pointer. And, uh, she wanted to go to trial and as a result got convicted of a six pointer. You know, so anyhow. So, um, we had, uh. We, we hosted an M T C meeting on, uh, June thirtieth, twenty four. At, um, our office, uh, we had the chiefs there, um. Uh, Gene Ortega was acting chief at that time, uh, representing Monovista. There was a hundred percent attendance from the chiefs. Uh, we had Delmore, Southport, Solatch, Blanca, Lahera in attendance, uh, which are. Municipalities that we work with. So went through the process of amending our M T C from twenty twenty. Uh, a lot of, uh, that was, uh. The personal mobility devices that are being used on the streets anymore, uh. Um, motor scooters, uh, and, uh, uh, e-bikes, uh, um. Segways, uh, one wheelers, uh, just, just all sorts of personal devices. And, um. The, uh, the, uh, state has, uh, enacted legislation. Uh, where some of these, uh, offenses will apply like careless driving and reckless driving to these mobility devices, believe it or not. It's just that you don't accumulate any points for convictions. So, uh. It's, uh, it's kind of interesting the way that this is being approached. Um. The, um. We also discussed, uh, some of the, uh, effects that, uh, A T Vs are having. Uh, I don't think, uh, there's any inclination for us to change our ATV ordinances right now. And. The way that that's basically working out is that, uh. Monovista, Alamosa, uh, pretty much Solatch, uh, Delmore, um, and, uh. Even Lahera, I think, are going pretty much with sweeping A T Vs off the city streets. There's a lot of. What I would call afterburn that, uh, when you start letting these devices on the city streets or. Town streets as the case may be, it's really hard to, uh. Reverse course, uh, based upon what kind of damages being done out there. And, uh, there's some, uh, municipal authorities where it is totally different situations, such as Southport sample. And they're right up against the national forest. So they have, they were kind of the leader in some of the ATV legislation. But, um, we're building that into the municipal code. Um, what we'll end up with, with municipal code is. A code that is this size. This is the last code we did in twenty twenty. And, uh, it's divided into, uh, when you do one of these as, uh. As a code that you adopt, you do several things. You, first of all, you have to go all the way through the code. And we have our legal staff doing that now. Um, of, um, putting the new provisions into the code. Fortunately, when we went through this back in twenty twenty. We modeled this thing to Monovista. And, um, so the, the language, rather than being in the C dot version. That they furnish you is in the language of the city of Monovista as it pertains to money. So part of it is the ordinance itself, and then, uh, the point system. Uh, this is sent in, points are sent in from the city, just like they are from the county. Uh, the equipment, uh, the, uh, moving violations. The penalties, the abandoned vehicles definitions, and at the end, the, uh, traffic sign, uh, schedule. This is some work for the P D to go out and do on the traffic signs, the inventory, all those, the stop signs, the yield signs, uh. Slow at school zones and all those signs. Uh, so that we won't have anybody coming in to contest the validity of stops at those particular signs. Um, the, uh, there was some discussion about the, uh. Surcharges and so forth, trying to standardize the surcharges so that when you're stuck in one place, uh, in one town, you're not. Faced with a different surcharge than when you go to another town. These surcharges are tacked on. To the violations themselves, uh, to the fine schedule. And, uh, we're running at, uh, fifty dollars for surcharges at present time. Those surcharges. Can be used, it's up to the council, but, uh, they can be used for, um, police officer training and equipment. And that's, I think, how the, the concept was actually designed. So. You'll probably hear more about that from P D, but, uh. Uh, that's the way that we're approaching that. On the M T C. So we'll end up with, uh, when we get through with this and it will take some work because we're having to go through a lot of stuff here. Our office is going through that, uh. That C dot version and conforming that to municipal version that we're doing for it in Monovista. Uh, we'll end up with the ordinance then adopting the new M T C. Uh, and once we do that, then we have to send it off to the state for their approval. And we finally get back a letter of approval from the state of Colorado on that. So that's, um, that's the regimen with, uh, the M T C doing there. Um. Four of us from Miami were at the C N L conference. Lauren was there, G G, Jay, myself. Um, in Loveland, um, six, uh. Hmm, what was it? Eighteenth through the twenty first, I believe, in Loveland. Um. Discussions on, uh, city finance, uh, T, T I F, uh, disability issues, uh, public comment, uh. First Amendment, uh. Um. Historic preservation, community heritage, broadband, fiber condemnation issues, liquor licensing, home rule. Mobile home parks, um, A I. Uh, and municipal contracting with some of the topics there and I have pulled down on the slides. From all of those lectures and composers in a manual, their book. And so any of you are welcome to see any of those that you might be interested in that and we could, you know, send them to you. So. Uh, that was, that was pretty informative, especially I think part of contracting. Um. Back in May, you, uh, passed the Board of Adjustment, uh, Ordinance. Which called for a five member Board of Adjustment, uh. One of which will be from the P C Planning Commission and the other four from the community. Um, either city residents, uh, are and or owning or being in possession of real estate in the city. Um, in other words, like an owner of a business, uh, that is leasing down, down the property or something like that. Uh, the B O A primarily decides variances. And it takes four of the five members to pass and approve a variance. So. You need to think about making those appointments because, uh, we've had during the past six months, we've had to send. B O A requests and right now you don't have really anybody in the B O A. As it's been reconstituted. So, uh, that needs to have your attention for appointments there. Um. Oh. Ordinance, uh, nine twenty seven under twelve two thirty. Reference the consolidated fee schedule. referenced the consolidated fee schedule as Appendix two F to Chapter two of the Municipal Code. And um, I'm I'm not sure we ever got to an endgame on this. Um, for consistency purposes, we had tendered an ordinance placing Appendix uh two A, two B, which was the organizational chart, two B, rules of procedure, two C, personnel policy, two D, bidding and purchasing policy, two E, access to public records policy, and two F, consolidated fee schedule. Um, back into the municipal code. The consist, speaking of consistency, you already have uh Appendix ten A as part of your municipal code, which is your wastewater rules and regulations, uh which is an appendix to your utilities. So, um the uh policies uh are referenced almost as often as your subsidy code provisions. An example of that is the sale of city property, which is in Appendix TB. And uh also at at section fourteen C and also in section two dash eight dash fifty of the code. Um. So I don't think it makes any difference how many cities and towns frankly do this or don't do it. Uh, I don't think the citizens should have to make an open records request to obtain these types of policies, which are common policies in the city. And we can do this without any real expense. Uh, we have thirteen codebooks out there. And uh the clerk can easily make thirteen copies for distribution. And the distribution process can be inside of City Hall whenever you come here and you put those right into your volume. This volume of mine already has all the uh policies in it. And so you're not going to expand that book significantly by putting those in there. Um. And uh you don't have to send these to the codifier to stick them in there. Uh, the issue here is really ease of access and consistency. And so uh I had uh sent out this ordinance, so I'll just give you a copy uh here to take a look at. We're not trying to pass this tonight, but just for reference and back. On next one, I'm here. So.
I hear you.
You may wanna, you may wanna consider that, especially since uh when we passed the uh ordinance on um on uh the BOA, it did reference uh Appendix two A. Um. In the uh appendices. Um. So now. Should have put notes here. Uh, we um, in regard to the uh, here it is. Um. Oh, I wanted to mention Senate Bill twenty-four, one thirty-one, since we were talking about legislature on Monday too. Uh, just as matter of information, this is uh they carry up firearms into City Hall. You have some signs out there, no firearms allowed. Uh. Some interesting things have been happening over the past week with firearms, to say the least. Um. The, the way this works is that unless you pass an ordinance allowing uh carries, whether concealed or open, uh inside of City Hall, they're prohibited. Some municipalities already acted upon this in passing ordinances allowing concealed carries. Uh, and that's what you have to do. So if you do nothing, uh then uh concealed carries will be prohibited inside of City Hall. Uh, they're always prohibited in court proceedings. But uh if you decide that you want to reverse that, uh then you need to let me know so that I can develop an ordinance to that effect. Okay?
Okay.
Uh. Airport. So we uh were preparing uh litigation for someone, one of the tenants out there who had uh been about three years behind in rent. We sent him a final demand letter. Uh, prior to filing any litigation, he came here and paid the full amount with that, six thousand plus dollars. Um. We had an airport meeting today between Jed Elthorpe, uh Gigi, Rob and myself. Um, trying to draft uh uh an airport lease that's gonna work. And uh we're approaching this right now with kind of bifurcating that whole procedure between private uh hangar space and hangar space, in other words, to be constructed. Uh, and uh commercial carriers. So we're going to hit the uh private space first. Um. We've got some, a lot of back and forths about how this would be best done. Uh, I'm gonna do some drafting between now and our next meeting, which will be uh July the thirtieth at one thirty PM. Uh, so that's where we are on that issue. I think I've talked long enough. Is anybody having questions?
Not. Alright, we'll move on to Council Committee, City Commission and Council reports. Counselor Watson. Counselor Howard.
I just have to kinda, you know, I found CML, CML, I mean, useful. All in the world for me. Have a lot of power and good, have a lot of municipal stuff, maybe not. But, so, actually, I like to most of the, yeah, the the weeks and meetings and meetings and stuff, I want that to be most useful. So, House Conference, useful.
Counselor Rance. Mayor Proton Sidala. Welcome, Chief. And uh that's about it. Well, I got a big old system, just kidding. By the way, that being said, everybody be safe. Remember Monty strong. Do you want, we will adjourn the meeting until August first, six PM, till Council Chairman.